We have a full call, but.
You ready?
There you go.
Right now.
All right, we have a minute still. We have a minute.
Six twenty-nine.
I did start streaming us live, just so, just so the board is aware.
Thank you.
Streaming us live.
Thank you.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you. All right, is it time Karen?
Now it's six twenty.
Okay. Thank you everyone for being here Thursday, March tenth, twenty twenty-two. And I have been instructed that I be to read this constituent mass comment statement to diversity, equity and inclusion. The constituent planning board is committed to providing an environment of respect to our meetings. We ask all members to interrupt and discuss the committee even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome, welcome to and respected. We ask our planning members and all who participate to commit to support and respect our community. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for Thursday, March twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Today is March tenth.
March tenth. Seven. Second?
Second.
I'll say her.
Bye.
Oh, let's take a roll call over there, right?
No, Rebecca's not on the meeting yet.
No, she's not there. Not here yet, Rebecca's asleep.
She's not here.
Right, so she, yeah, when. If she shows up.
Right.
For the next one, okay. We have, the first item is the immediate continuance of seven meter plan. I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for site plan administrative review and special permit for a multifamily building in the Village Center and Waverly District, Green Bush Gateway District, Green Bush Gateway Business Subdistrict, VCM, GDC, GWV until March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at eight thirty P M. And to continue the town action requirement with the town work until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second, I do.
I'll say her. Bye, okay. All right, moving rapidly along, we are now with a continued public hearing for special permit accessories dwelling eighty-one Norwell Avenue. Mary Ann Lewis, if you would like to come up, use those.
Thank you, good evening, Ben, Jeff and board members. This, as the chair lady stated, is a continuation of a hearing from January twenty-ninth, I believe, at which time I appeared before this board. There were several questions posed that warranted further discussion at that meeting. Firstly, there was a question as to whether or not an ASB was on file with the building department. And upon further research, it is now established that the ASB have in fact been properly submitted prior to the last meeting. Secondly, I have submitted an updated floor plan for the primary dwell to reflect its current status, which allows for what is permissible for the accessory dwell. And lastly, a site visit, actually with, just this morning with Karen and Bob Bobo, confirms that there is no lighting on the rear and the right side of the accessory dwelling. And the front and left side legs are downward facing fixtures that would be complying with the building code. So accordingly, I respectfully request that the board approve my application. Thank you.
All right, so there are several resubmissions of materials. The latest plan is dated three-two, but it's the one that's submitted on three, where it has stamped in date of three-nine. Upstairs can project into setbacks as can decks. So the building needs setbacks for a freestanding detached structure. Inspections have indicated that there are two doors to fulfill e-grocery requirements per code. There is only one lot now, as the lots have been merged by the merger doctrine as in common ownership. The lot is thirteen thousand three hundred square feet. The ceiling height in the loft meets the definition of a habitable attic. Gross floor area does not include unenclosed portages per definition found in the zoning bylaw. This is an enclosed porch by screen panels with a roof, electricity and lighting.
We also have received several letters from others that basically are, they're not happy.
Right.
They're not happy. They're here, they're available in the record. So, I mean, this is what it is. People are not happy. All right, I'll open it up. Anything relevant that you want to add?
No, Madam Chair, please.
I'll open it up to the board. Testing. Want to start, please?
Um, well, I just, I think you validated final calculations. Push square porch.
I believe, yeah, it was on the, it was on that plan that was submitted, that stamped in the ninth that we sent you. The calculations seem to show that the loft area is a hundred, hundred ninety-one square feet. And the building inspector looked in the loft today and the ceiling height has to be greater than seven and a third feet. And he verified, you know, and that it appeared to be greater than seven and a third feet. So the loft would count as a habitable attic. And the porch is whatever square foot was on that thing. So those numbers add up based on the eighteen sixty-three, I believe, to base square footage to two-three-one-oh. Forty percent of that is nine hundred and twenty-four, which is greater than eight hundred and seventy square feet, which is the size of the accessory dwell.
Good. Or the calculations look any differently than the building.
No. You awesome? Bob?
Nothing.
Ben?
I mean, is a screen porch usually counted as gross footage?
I'm telling you, the definition in our zoning bylaw says gross floor area does not include an unenclosed porch. So, I mean, this one has, this one is enclosed, it has a roof, it has screens and it has electricity and lighting.
Then we can't say we have.
In one instance, we didn't.
Who missed?
In one instance, we didn't. I don't think it's come up as a regular thing that we have commonly dealt with on, on square footage. I think there's only two, the two cases that I can recollect.
Okay, so then my other, this gets back to the floor area stuff too, is as a matter of consistency, it's my opinion that this, the habitable attic space potentially opens up a can of worms. Because we also, does the area above the, excuse me, does the area above the second story living area accessory dwelling also that count as habitable attic space? Because we can not, if we're going to count one, we got to count the other, in my opinion. For as a matter of consistency.
This habitable attic is finished. It's got a finished ceiling, it's got a finished walls. The building inspector climbed up the ladder and verified that today.
Okay, so then we need to make sure that the third floor of the, or second, two and a half floor, whatever you want to call it, that accessory dwelling is also, is unencapable, is that correct? I mean, wouldn't that make sense?
Correct. We can write that in on a draft.
We should condition it, it's, it's.
We can condition it.
Because just the fact that the mass of the structure is, is an obvious issue with this project. And Kat's kind of worried about that. I mean, I don't, I don't wish it to be a punitive condition, but on the other hand, I think there has to be consistent
I agree.
from a enforcement of the bylaw perspective. So that, that's just, that's just one of my concerns, looking at the structure and kind of I think a lot of the concerns of the size could have been ameliorated if the roof, if the ridge height wasn't so high and the mass wasn't so big. So I think it's that extra portion of the structure that's really throwing a lot of people.
Ken, I should agree with Ben. We need to make it right across the board. So this obviously gives us a opportunity to look at our accessory dwelling bylaws. We do have to revisit that. Readdress that, we will revisit that next year.
Yes, we tried once before. And if one thing is wrong, it did not go well.
Okay, we'll try it.
So we will try again.
I do not have, I, I do know that people are not happy.
I know that.
Um, well, with it.
Not happy.
Um, like it needs all the setbacks, it does everything it's supposed to do. So in the spirit of the bylaw, I'm just saying it's okay with me.
And this is a public hearing, if anyone has something that they would like to say, they are welcome to say. Just please identify yourselves.
I'm Christopher Patch, I live across the street in East of Norwell. So I have a question. You're including the enclosed deck. At the time of the application, the enclosed deck did not exist. It was done this week. So with the inspection today by Cameron and Bobo today, they're saying this was, was, was taken care of and considered part of the dwelling. But wasn't it the time that the application for the special permit was put in? At what point do we say, well, you know, someone fixed it so that I could accommodate their block with a special permit?
I think, sir, what happened was, Ms. Lewis was given a laundry list of things that needed to be done in order to meet the condition of the accessory apartment by law.
I understand that.
And to my knowledge, at this point in time, whether we all agree or disagree, she passed. She was told that she had to come up with more square footage in the primary dwelling. And the porch does classify as a part of the dwelling. And in the wintertime, it could be, she could glass in there and use it all year round. And as far as the third floor is concerned, it's finished, according to the building inspector. So.
What third floor?
The second.
The second floor, sorry.
Of the track, yeah, sorry.
Of the primary house. Lot is, the lot is finished.
No, I, I understand, I understand, and believe me, I don't, I, you're in a weird eating situation. I'm just questioning, at the time of the application, she did not meet the requirement.
She didn't, and she.
And now, now suddenly, she's being advised by the board that you're, you're, not you, the building department, that by the way, to do this, we're going to give you a permit.
Nobody say that, nobody said for.
Well, that's what, that's exactly what happened because that's what you just said, Anna, I'm sorry. Sorry Chairman, Chairman Chuan. You just said she was giving a laundry list of what she needs to do to increase her square footage in order to meet that. So therefore, she was advised by the town, this is how you, this is what you do.
But we do that for everyone, for everyone. We do.
I want to make a, we did not tell her what to do. She presented several options to us and we said, we don't believe this qualifies as habitable space. We don't, and we said this may qualify as habitable space. We didn't tell her what to do.
No, I'm not saying the town's fault, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm looking at the situation right now. And, and again, you pointed out, we have to revisit this. Because what we're seeing now, you know, this, 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 this little trend of mini homes that are being put on lots?
Yeah.
You, one could argue that I could put mini homes, yes, I could call Reed Ferry and put all these little, and go up to seven hundred and fifty square feet and call them all accessory dwellings and be within the requirement. It's already, it's already been, it's already been challenged in those states and, and they want the inhabitants to want. But I'm just saying, at this point, we're looking at a situation where we're saying, well, this is kind of, don't get me wrong. I, the argument that she did something after the fact, sorry, Ron. I watched it down on Garden Road with Greg Moss, I watched it down on Hood Road, I watched it down on Kenneth Road, where accessory dwellings were built before the fact and were given accessory permits. Permits, special, special permits for accessory dwellings. So we can't make that argument that she did it after the fact. But my question is, you know, if we're going to stick to the letter of the law, the spirit of the law, we should and not be, have variables. Because that's what I've seen over the years, and believe me, I've watched almost every meeting. And I've been in here very, a long time, so very many meetings, and there's been variables. You just kind of throw in the question, well, you know, is this person given special treatment? No, not saying that. But the interpretation of law, there's nothing preventing her from doing what she did, as Steve B. Auckland made at the previous meeting. So like I said, the group disclaimer is, we need to revisit the entire.
We already had that discussion.
Right.
You will see it on next year's end of town meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Jeff.
Ms. Ma'am.
Colin Clark, um, the question, study Norwell across the street as well. One of the members mentioned calculating the square footage of the accessory dwelling, about including the space that is above the living space of the accessory dwelling. What is to prevent the applicant or any future owner from further developing and putting dormers at the top of this accessory dwelling and increasing the square footage more? Why would not, why would that square footage not be included in this calculation now if it is habitable as the second floor of the primary?
They'd have to go before the building inspector for the requirement.
They have to come back to the planning board too.
Right.
Because we can't, we condition, we condition a special permit that they can make no changes beyond what's already approved. So they would have to come back to get it approved by the planning board. And you would have to then again find more square footage in the primary dwelling.
But as it is, my understanding from the January twenty-seventh, there are stairs up to the, the, above the accessory dwelling living space that may or may not be, you know, meet the, meet the terms of livable space, in which case they should be included in the square footage of the accessory dwelling application.
The board has said that they want to condition that tonight that it shall remain as uninhabitable space.
But it is habitable space. But what can make it uninhabitable?
One of the things that we did for an accessory dwelling, and I think it was on, it was somewhere, we manually put up bas, trusses so that you could stand, or you could not.
Finish it.
Finish it. And therefore, it was uninhabitable. So, I mean, that's something.
If I may, if I may.
Is my permit, your my permit is a little dangerous.
Excuse me?
If I may, for a moment. Inspections, all this will be in addition contingent on inspections. The building department's going to come out there. They're going to see whether a face, a space is finished or not finished. Uh, you know, you don't count basements that are fit with finished walls as space, much like you wouldn't count an attic as finished. So it remains unfinished. If, to your point Benjamin, either you include everything or you exclude things that aren't finished. And things have been excluded in the primary that are not finished. And they'll be excluded as well in the, in the accessory that aren't finished. So I'm happy to accept that condition. And to reiterate what Karen said, in the event and in the future, I want to finish the basement of the house. I'll finish anything else anywhere else. It's, I'm going to come to be probably appropriate units and departments to get whatever permits are needed to be done.
A-Lox.
Do you want to open up the hotline?
Sure.
If there's anyone listening online that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand at the bottom of your screen. Um, or if you're on my phone, you can hit star nine to ask a comment or question. So this would be the time to do that. What comment?
All right, um.
Excuse me, Jeff, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
I just curious, um, occupancy permits been issued?
Karen?
Not for the accessory dwelling.
How about the primary dwell?
I don't know if the primary dwell.
My understanding from Bob Bobo, neither.
Well, I didn't ask Bob Bobo that today.
No, I understand that. No, 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 I'm just asking that, this is not being against the applicant. I have to ask a question legally. In order to give an accessory dwelling permit, you'd have to have a certified occupancy permit for the primary dwelling. In other words, ASB as well as signups from the permits. But that doesn't exist, and then by the way, just so you know, excuse me Karen, I spent an hour with Bob on Thursday discussing other issues, but this was brought up. Do occupancy permits exist? And if that isn't the case, in other words, if you don't have a ASB for the primary along with signups, how can you issue accessory dwelling permit? Because you don't, you haven't certified the square footage for primary dwelling in order to certify when you're going to allow an accessory dwelling. I know, I know, believe me. And I'm not, there's nothing against the applicant, trust me. This has to do with, are we going to, are we as a town going to conform to what is required under the bylaws?
I hope so, sir.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, with some of these things, basically, you know, the horse has lost the mare. You know, it's just, we have sort of been picking this up after the fact. And it's unfortunate that it happened this way. Someone wanted, um, it's, Anna, can you pick up on this? It, it's just.
What, what's happened here, I think, is that for us, he forgives instead of permission. And she's, Ms. Lewis has come in, we gave her a log and wished to fix it and we would like to see done. She was able to do that for us, there will be, we are not charged for occupancy permits until the building department signs off on it. That's unfortunately a different department from us.
Just I understand.
Um, and we would have to check with Mr. Bobo. I have no idea of anybody.
Okay, no, just.
You don't, you just want me to say I have no idea.
He, he absolutely confirmed today that the accessory dwelling does not have an occupancy permit.
Okay.
We did not discuss the project.
The project, okay.
I'm just asking the legality, not, I need, this could be Joe Bobo my own. If, if, if someone doesn't certify with an occupancy permit, which includes a certified stand plan of the ASB of the primary dwelling,
They have to sign the permit.
then you need, you know, you would need, you know, either a professional lance of air or a certified engineer. I could come in here and tell you, I've got X amount of square feet, no one certified. And then I'm asking for an accessory dwelling, I asking for approval that accessory dwelling based on something that hasn't been standard certified.
But we, we, oftentimes, it hasn't happened very often, but somebody builds a new house.
Mm-hmm.
And they add, and at the same time, there is an accessory apartment.
Yes.
With it.
Right.
So they happen together. This unfortunately seems to have happened together. And, but we weren't informed until after the fact.
I understand that.
So this is one of those situations and nobody's happy. And it's, we're trying to.
Right or wrong?
Right or wrong. It's trying to be consistent. Not everyone is going to be pleased, but we cannot ask the applicant to give it down.
No, 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 don't get me wrong, that, that's never, never been the problem in this situation. I'm asking, I'm, again, as I pointed out, this has nothing to do with the applicant. This has to do with, let's assume I did the exact same thing. And now, as I control by the building department, there's no, there's no occupancy permit for either dwelling. Now, that dwelling, that primary dwelling is used as the calculation. Sort of, it has to be certified. This can't be someone went out there with a measuring tape, building department or whatever, or myself, who measured up and submit, so I was flagging.
Well, the accessory's department goes out, they, they square footage.
It's required, I'm, I'm, no disrespect Karen, you're required to have a certified stand plan either by professional lance of air or professional engineer certifying an ASB.
And they have that, and they have that in the building department for the foundation.
For what, primary?
No, both.
Both.
For both, then why has an occupancy permit been issued? That's the nine million dollar question, what is it?
That, that's the question you have to ask the building department now.
Well, I asked and he said, no, I can tell you they have them issued.
We don't need that.
So what's the issue here?
You can ask you.
You have to ask Karen?
We don't need that, sorry.
We don't. I mean, we have a situation, it's in our Kenneth Road or we were, somebody wanted to turn the house into an accessory and build another house on the property.
That was Kenneth Road.
Kenneth Road, and we said no.
I know.
We said no. So we take each case individually, we do the very, very best we can.
I know.
And as I said, we don't please everybody oftentimes.
I understand, I respect the board and their decisions. I'm just bringing in a question in the future.
Which we can't answer at this moment.
No, I know you can't, but I think the board has to recognize in the future, we need to revisit this whole accessory dwelling.
And we as.
Look at our accessory dwelling checklist.
Yes.
Really should be looked at.
Right.
Ron, because what I've seen over the years, permits have been not approved, and you shake your head and say, well.
I would have. Then I would suggest that when we start vetting the accessory apartment bylaw for a year from now, I will expect to see you there.
Oh, I will be here.
And I will expect your input.
Oh, I will be.
Okay.
I will be here.
That's because we went to town meeting with the sir. And that it came out of, was it Edgar Road, people want Edgar?
Oh, no, I don't.
It was.
It was in two thousand and.
What's Edgar, it was, um.
It was in two thousand and thirteen.
Right.
That the board tried again.
Whatever.
Next one up.
And they were all in a twist over accessory apartments. We spent an inordinate amount of time trying to get it right and not one of them shut up.
I think it was, I remember it actually.
No, but it doesn't matter.
It could have been, it could have been yours.
I, I believe it was, because I believe Mr. Pritchett was present at that hearing. And I was here. And I was here.
So is I.
Okay.
Well, we will work on this.
Your memory is better than mine.
Yeah, so we will take care of this, we will work at it.
Thank you very much.
All right, and.
Thank you for letting me put my input in.
You're more than welcome.
Again, I just want to state, I am not, this is not anything that is with the applicant. This has to do with the fact that I feel that.
It's business.
It's, 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 we need to do something with this, this bylaw.
All right, thank you, but yes, ma'am.
Uh, with regard to the, the lighting accessory for my garage, uh, because of the size of the building, downward focused is down into people's yards, particularly one of the next door neighbor. So because it's so high, even though lighting is downward directed, it still impacts the others. So, um.
Madam Chair, I went out there today, there's no down, there's no lighting on the rear or one side of the accessory dwell.
Uh-huh, there's another side that goes right on the, right on the line, the fence line.
Yeah.
Where the stairs are, so the stairs are lit. And the, and the front of the garage has a, has a deck.
Well, then we could probably.
Come down, so.
We could probably say like.
Because of the size of the building, it, it has the same effect as shining directly into somebody's window.
They're downlights. What I observed out there today was downlights, right at the garage, there's, there's gooseneck lights and they shine down. The other ones down, well, shine down.
Come at night.
We, we condition typically every special permit for accessory dwellings, you condition that all the lighting has to be downlighted.
And because of the size of the building, down lighting has a, has a different impact on the other. down lighting has a, has a different impact on the butters. It has to come at night.
No, no, I understand you because you're saying like you're looking upwards so that it could be in there or be designed to feature whether or not the light shines down. You can still see it. So you could use an alternative source of lighting, like path lighting or something that's even...
Something that doesn't...
Top lighting or whatever, I don't care. But it would be something where maybe it's not as prominent in terms of the...
That is true.
Off set between, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
So come at night.
I could stipulate that that angle of the lighting is, or the lighting is shaded such that the angle produced at the, at the light source ends at the termination of the property, whatever that angle is going to be, seventy degrees, hundred and five.
We did say any lighting installed should be downlight to not shed light on abutting properties. And so I think that...
And second part is not that, it's not happening.
I think so, so we address that?
Well, so that's a condition.
Yes, I'd be happy to address it. I believe it's already addressed, but I'll revisit it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and we don't sit here?
Well, I would just, I mean, we've, we've heard a lot of public displeasure at this.
Yes, we have.
And, you know, even if the accessory dwelling permit is denied, the building's those rights exist. It could exist as a barn or an accessory use structure or something of that sort. There's no way that it's getting torn down, which we already know. And it also, you know, whether the permit is approved or denied, it's sort of material in terms of the overall impact to a butters since the building is going to remain. So I guess since we've had a lot of public input, I would ask to the, or just point out to, to the folks in the room as well as online that if you want any sort of conditions put in, for instance, we don't really have anything. We never really see anything about screening or anything of that nature. If that, if those are things that you think would help improve, now you get time to bring that up so we can try to work that in and maybe come up with some sort of animal capable solution with the app or ten.
Yeah, for example, privacy screening on the porch.
I thought that was part of the mitigation of the impact of the, there was talk of fencing, screening, and have, uh, you know, planted to, to include privacy of the butters.
I think we did, we brought it up, but we didn't, we didn't put anything in there. We...
Because she's not required to do that, right? That's not part of the bylaw. That she's not required to do that.
That we mentioned in January twenty seventh, we did about mitigating the invasion of privacy.
Yeah, we talked about, yes.
Coming from a special permit, we need...
Yes.
There was talk about landscaping.
Yes, right, it was. But unfortunately, as we stated back then, this was basically, you don't even...
I understand that, but this was mitigation.
Well, it's very hard to mitigate when it's already there.
Well, this was mitigating the, the size and the loss of privacy of the butters. And those three options were described as something that the applicant should consider mitigating. And she said, I will come back with a plan to mitigate.
I'll check the tape, but... All right, that's, do not tell them that. You can ask for one of those, Karen?
I, I will wish, I will wish to remind the board, this building does meet the setbacks. And under the zoning bylaw, you can have a deck all the way to the, to your property line. And so I'm just saying that that, if that, if the board wants that stuff to change in the future, then we have to change the zoning file.
Which is what we are supposed to do. But we can't do it tonight.
So this now becomes an issue that is neighbor to neighbor working out as opposed to anything the town can enforce. You have to work with it.
I understand how that fits. But, but the, but the, but the board mentioned those three things as something the applicant could do. And if they were never something that, that the board or the town could enforce, it should be, I don't think it should have been mentioned as something that the applicant could have been done to mitigate. I mean, it's not fair to the butters or even the applicant if, if, you know, the information wasn't...
I think if it's...
Something that could be done.
Madam Chair, for me, I think at the time that that was mentioned, the as-built, we weren't sure that the as-built had been filed. We now know that it had been filed and it complies with all the setbacks.
I actually don't, I actually don't know what's the issue. I think the issue was, and many times before, is we've asked the applicant to go the extra mile to mitigate the impacts to their neighbors. And in this case, this is a pretty big one. It came all down to the fact. So to the extent that there's screen or landscaping that can be done that can mitigate the impact, I think you should, I do believe, we talked about that, that you should do so. And then we've asked others who've had special permits to do exactly that.
If I may.
Yes.
There, we talked about fence, fencing and potential landscaping. So there is, the area is environmentally challenged. The fences that actually currently exist have been knocked down three times in different storms. So it's a high, I would call it a high wind area. So I would just caution that, you know, in, in the problem solving app, really problem solving app, I don't think that that's probably a viable, you know, option to try to put some type of screening in. I mean, probably the maximum fence that you, that you put up would be an eight or a ten foot fence. Or, you know, some, the shrubber would probably be six, eight feet. That doesn't really accomplish what, what... A different situation where that might be a viable, you know, solution to... You know, the lighting was the third issue that we talked about. Uh, you know, I confirm, like I said with the site visit, that there were two parts of the structure that don't have any lighting on it at all. There was some allegations made that there was lighting on the sides. It was this, but did, there is no lighting yet. And, and the downlighting. And again, I'm happy to work with some, maybe changing the light bulb to a lower watt or something like that. But, you know, code requires lights by egresses. And so every egress, you know, every time you try to do something good with public policy, sometimes there's a yin and yang to it. But there's nothing obnoxious about any of the lighting, you know, that's done. It hasn't been meant to, it's not, not a floodlights going in my neighbor's bedrooms. It's just, you know...
What about...
The structure meets, the structure meets the setbacks.
What about screening the porch? Did you address that?
You mean in the accessory dwelling?
Yes.
Yep.
Screening it?
Yeah, privacy screening, like crosshatch.
So the, the possibility, the place that probably would make the most sense to, you know, put some type of screening would be, as you look at it, just on the right side of the deck.
A trellis.
Like a trellis?
Yes.
And, I'm sorry, I'm not here. But, and I'm happy to put up a trellis, to be honest with you. You know, I don't have a problem doing it. I just don't know how effective or viable it will be. So I'm happy to accept that as a condition and put one up. But I'm not saying that it won't blow off in the next storm. Again, it's, it's a high wind area, you know, where you can hear the ocean from where we are. So stuff doesn't, doesn't stay very, you know, readily. But again, I'm happy to try it, happy to accept that as a condition on that right side of the, of the deck as you look at the grass. The other thing I remind folks of is the, the structure is setback, I think, a hundred feet from the street. So whatever's going on in the front of lighting is not shining on anyone's property. It's a hundred feet from the street. So...
I don't think they're talking about the street.
But that's the third time with the lighting, as you know. Thank you.
Do you have a question online?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, can you please identify yourself with a name and address?
Yeah, it's Maria Hearn at three thirty-four Tilden. So I'm not clear on the landscaping, why there wasn't a landscaping plan submitted. The board asked for it. And beyond that, I don't see any reason why there can't be some mitigation done in the back of the garage. One good example of mitigation of lots that are really close together is over on, it's the corner of Tilden and Irving. There's very large, tall evergreen type things. I don't, I don't have the exact name. So that's in a very tight space. And it would be in the same, you know, so-called wind area, which I think is debatable. So I think there are things that can be done. And what I would request is the board make a condition on the mitigation such as the landscaping and the lighting. The lighting, um... I understand what the applicant is saying about the front, but the fact remains is the lighting is visible on the adjoining properties, including my property in the back. And it's, it's high intensity lighting.
You change the light bulb?
Yes.
Change the light bulb, thank you.
What about the, yeah, the landscaping or mitigation?
Well, Ms. Lewis has agreed to, and part of the condition, to put up lattice along the side, the right side of the accessory apartment, accessory dwelling to mitigate the view, as it were. As far as other landscaping, because the deck was right to the property line, there really isn't anything that can be done there. So it is, Karen, help me out here?
What I'm doing is the back, the back of the garage. That's where the mitigation needs to be done. There's nothing back there. There's no fence.
I thought there was a fence back there.
No, there is not. I, I put that in my comments today. Contrary to what the applicant said in the last meeting, there is absolutely no fence in the back of, in the rear of the garage, the applicant's garage.
There is a fence. The dog today was barking over the fence.
Today was barking over the fence, yes.
So again, these allegations that I somehow misrepresented something or don't, you know, there was a dog barking, I'm glad Molly was barking now.
There was a dog barking on the other side of the fence.
There wasn't dog barking on another side of the fence, but that is...
I thought I saw a picture of a fence.
I meant to have a picture of that, I just have a picture of the back of the, of the back of the...
I remember fence. It's kind of rickety, but there's a fence there.
When was the fence put up?
I'd say probably, um, umpteen years ago. It's there when she bought the property. So it's...
Okay, well, I can send a picture. There's not a fence.
Thank you.
Another thing that I thought that might help is maybe do some potted, potted plants on the deck. That might, you know, put, if you put them sort of near where the light might be, maybe that might help, you know, provide some, some nice environment for people living in the accessory dwelling and help to screen.
Well, wouldn't those look better in the so-called wind area?
If I may, I'm, I'm just not quite sure that that would accomplish what we're looking to accomplish. I do think the most effective way to accomplish what we want to accomplish is to change the light bulb and I'm happy to do that.
Uh, you should change the light, you should change the... I'll be downwash.
It is, it is, it is.
Is that a base kept under properties, is it?
It's according to this, it is.
It's a hundred, I don't know what light shines a hundred feet off the property.
I guess there's gooseneck lights under...
Under the deck, you mean?
Under the deck by the garage. On top, on top of the, uh... On top, there's lights. On top, there's lights. I, you know, I sent you pictures previously of the front of the, of the building. Let me try to look in my phone to see if I can find you pictures of the light. I did not take a picture of the front of the house today.
I really do believe that a lower wattage light bulb will solve that issue. And I'm happy to change that up.
Do you want to post pictures? You have a picture?
I do have a picture. I previously sent these pictures to the board.
This is, this is the front.
Right.
That's the front.
So that's materializing to this. The butters are rear and side.
Are there any other pictures you sent out?
Do you have any of those?
Of which one? Besides?
Well, I mean, this was, this is, this is one button over there. This is the primary dwelling. This is the primary dwelling. I just take pictures of all the butters. I can show you the pictures I took today. I was, I was wanting something, you know...
Karen? Some of the pictures in the meeting, if you want to look and see. And maybe I can show you.
This is, uh...
This is...
This is the back of the house.
No lights.
That's looking up, but I'm in the backyard, you know, where the dog was barking, looking up.
There's no white lights.
There's no lights, like I said.
That's just the back.
There are no lights on the back and the right side.
And the right side, there's no lights either.
There's not even a fixture that has a set of lights.
So the broken, the, the lights on the front that are above the patio.
Above the deck.
Above the deck.
Yeah. But again, those, those are a hundred feet from the street.
Yeah.
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 And there's nothing in the rear.
Is that the fence? There's a fence. I don't know where this is. Or maybe this is not the fence. I just don't know what this means. Ms. Lewis? That's the side. That must be the side.
That's a neighbor, that's a neighbor sending that picture.
That's, that's a neighbor, yes. Yes, right. But it confirms the side that there's no light fixtures.
This is the side that happens here.
Yeah, yes. I mean, I feel that's what I'm going to be going about.
I don't think we need to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Whatever happens now. Wait a minute, go. I just would have to try and log in and I'll... Well, she can log in and tell her to go away.
Tell her to go away, okay.
Okay, I think Ms. Hearn is asking to speak again. One more, somebody hasn't spoken, wants to speak, yes, Karen?
My name is Diane Dimmer. I live at seventy-five Normal Ave, directly next door to eighty-one Normal Ave. And I would like some kind of landscaping between the properties because I have a beautiful backyard that I can no longer use. There's, I am looking, I'm living underneath this garage, okay? And there's nothing that's going to stop that from being a party deck, you know? Could, could this be an Airbnb? Could this be, I was told it was going to be an office, okay? And then I continued and continued. I got different stories every time. And now that stairway is right at the property line, less than three feet from my chef. And then I was told that I could have my shed be made to move or my, my, my driveway was on property line. I was told all these things, so I never spoke up about anything. And now I know it's too late, but I've got this beautiful backyard patio carpet that I'm on display with people looking down on me. And I want this house because of that beautiful backyard that can't be used without being looked upon. I can't have a pool or a hot tub or an outside shower. That place is so big, so high with this wraparound. And she's saying she'll take care of the right side of that garage. What about the left side? That hooks over my property, the property behind. Everybody around there is not happy.
We're not. I'm well aware.
And, and, and the mitigation, you know, there's no, there's no greenery, there's no landscaping, there's nothing. And the lights on the main house have shined into, if I have my curtains open, they shine into my dining room, my, my kitchen. My, the, my bedroom at one time, the lights on the deck shine into my bedroom. Now she's dimmed those a little bit, but it's been nothing but a problem for me personally. It's kind of changed this whole setup that I've had in my backyard and there's nothing that can be fixed. I mean, I know it can't be twined down or anything like that, but I'd like something done with the space between our properties. You know, I don't know. She told me that my fence was on her property. I'm like, I don't care, tear it down, whatever. Let's decide where is that property line so that I can establish my space between the two houses. And I, I planted six, seven, eight trees that would try to grow up and try to cover that deck space. So I have some privacy in my patio area. And that's going to take years, but I, I have sent a letter, you know, you saw all my concerns.
Yes.
And I just had to.
That's fine. You are entitled to say what you want to say. And thank you very much. All right, Ms. Lewis, I'm going to ask you this question. Yes?
Go ahead. You have someone on line eight.
You've heard all of these issues. And we all need to go along to get along. Is there anything that you are willing to do to mitigate the concerns of your neighbors in a really very tight spot? In terms of landscaping, you're going to dim down the bulbs, et cetera. Is there anything that you are over and above willing to do for these people to?
Well, I believe, um, that I have. I took a dilapidated property.
That, that's immaterial at this moment in time. I'm asking, going forward, is there anything that you would be willing to do to make this more palatable for the people that would live here?
Uh, change the light bulbs, um, and put up the privacy screening on the right-hand side of the, of the upper deck.
Would you be willing to do any type of landscaping?
No, I mean, and that's not being, because I'm not unwilling. I mean, my idea of what is landscaping is some, is different from someone else's. I don't like greenery. I, 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 I like rocks and gravel and, and that's how I've landscaped cameras out there today. I mean, I think it looks beautiful the way it is. I, I have boulders and rocks. That, that's, that's what I, I like.
Okay.
So I, you know, that's, that's my idea of, of, uh, lands, a landscaped property that I think is perfectly appropriate.
All right, but are you willing to do anything across the back of the accessory dwellings to mitigate the concerns?
I, I don't, with all due respect, Madam Chair, I don't think that it, it, it would, I don't have endless resources. I'm not a big developer. I'm a single-family property owner. You know, I've improved this lot, this neighborhood. Um, some of the things that people, to, to, to build a fence or to put up a tree that's 12, 25 feet, that doesn't accomplish anything that people are looking to accomplish. So I'm a reasonable person that is, is, I, I was being considering my neighbors when I picked the certain light fixtures that we have to, you know, that's downward facing. I'm happy to dim, dim those and, and, but I, I think it's beautifully landscaped as it is.
It's all in the eyes of the people.
Right.
Would, I, I'm just trying to, trying to brainstorm. Would you be willing to have roof darkening shades so, um, in the accessory dwelling so that the light doesn't shed out?
Yes.
Somebody else wants to speak?
Um, yes.
Same work. Okay.
I think Ms. Herne, you're, you're unmuted and are able to make a comment.
Okay, thank you. You know, I think this discussion points up, um, why the board needs to step up and make a specific condition on the mitigation. So the issue is not what is in the eye of the beholder on landscaping or who likes, you know, what landscaping. The issue is there are real harms that have been described by the neighbors and there needs to be mitigation. The board asked for mitigation plans the last meeting. I don't see any mitigation plans. And, you know, I'm not hearing that there's a specific condition that would take care of the situation. I, I think maybe there needs to be like a little bit more study by the board or the, the town planning office on what is possible. I mean, I'm not an expert on this and, you know, probably the neighbors aren't expert either. But I know there is the example at Tilden and, uh, Irving. I think it's between Irving and Holly. Um, and I think that looks like a very good example. Those are narrow evergreens.
I think those are our values.
Our values.
Those are our values.
Our values, yes, okay. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm not a, I'm not a plant expert. Thank you very much. Yeah, um, and the other thing that came to mind when Karen was talking about the screening, um, you know, I think I've seen somewhere like maybe, oh, I can't think of where, but it's like screening that has like little holes in it, um.
That's a trowel.
Okay, is that what it's called? Okay. Yeah, so I mean, you know, maybe there's something along that order. Um, and you know, just for the board's information, the fence that is existing on, um, one of the sides of the garage, um, it's a very flimsy stockade fence. So that's why it's falling down. I don't even think it has footings. So, you know, there's, I think there could be options that might be explored in terms of the fencing. So, I mean, I think to leave it to the applicant without having some specific conditions is not really mitigating and is not, um, you know, addressing all of the concerns. Oh, and can I just ask one other question? I'm sorry. But the, um, at the last board meeting, there was discussion about the secondary egress stair.
It's there.
It's nowhere near B.
The building commissioner has indicated to me that his inspector has signed off that there are two, that the egress is proper.
Oh, okay. Okay, my concern was whether a stair had to be built in the back. Okay, so no stair has to be built in the, in the, in the rear of the garage? Okay, thank you.
Two ways.
I think the board should decide what they want to do. I mean, if you want to start going through the draft decision and then try to decide as you go what you want to do and what, I mean, I've written down a couple additional conditions that you've stated. Um, and we, when we get to that, I can read them out loud and see if that's what the board would like to, in fact, do.
Let's do that. All right. I move today to the following silent facts. One, on December 22, 2021, applicant Mary Ann Lewis and owner John M. LaWafflin, trustee of the AMA Realty Trust, applied for a special permit for a detached accessory dwelling on the property of 81 Norwell Avenue. Two, according to the town of City's Assessors' Records and the D, property of 81 Norwell Ave is owned AMA Realty Trust, John M. LaWafflin trustee.
McCollum.
McCollum, sorry. The affidavit of trustee indicates that Mary Ann Lewis has the right to make operational decisions and to execute legal forms. Three, based on our floor plan submitted with the application, the planning board finds the floor area of the accessory dwelling to be 870 square feet in accordance with the assessor's records. A further ask bill provided by the applicant shows a loft area of 191 square feet added to the first floor area of 1,863 feet for the primary dwelling gives a total of 2,054 square feet. Plan A1 dated 3/22/22, received by the planning board on 3/9/22, shows a screened porch of 256 square feet for total area of 2,310 square feet. Forty percent of 2,310 is 924 square feet. The loft area meets the zoning bylaw definition of a habitable attic as the ceiling height meets or exceeds 7 and 1/3 feet. An unenclosed porch does not meet the definition of gross floor area. The porch is screened with electricity, lighting, and a roof, thus being enclosed. This does or does not? Does?
Does.
The size requirements of 530.2F of zoning bylaw for accessory dwellings, the bylaw allows 750 square feet or 40% of the total square footage of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. The accessory dwelling is subordinate to the existing single-bailing home. Four, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit and there will be only one accessory dwelling on the lot. Five, the property is in the residential R3 zoning district. The proposed detached accessory dwelling structure meets all required setbacks, building height, and yard requirements for primary dwelling. Six, the proposed accessory dwelling is to be located on the second floor of the newly constructed garage on the property. Access will be via a deck with a side door and two additional sliding doors on the front of the dwelling. Seven, the appearance of the accessory dwelling will be in keeping with the appearance of the primary dwelling. Eight, the site plan for 81 Norwell Avenue mass by Warwick and Associates, Inc., dated 3/29/2019, shows the location of the existing primary dwelling and the proposed accessory dwelling. The plan shows a circular driveway connecting to, to a driveway leading to the garage. This appears adequate to provide two parking spaces for the primary dwelling and two spaces for the accessory dwelling. Ample parking appears to be provided. Nine, the owner has submitted a signed notarized statement that she will occupy one of the units of 81 Norwell Avenue. Ten, the accessory dwelling will be serviced by Town Water and Sewer. The water department has commented that a separate water connection will be required and $14,000 connection fee paid. The sewer department has indicated that sewer connections and corresponding fees have been completed and paid. Eleven, the applicant meets the standards of the city's zoning bylaw for an accessory dwelling special permit. Any corrections or?
A couple questions. She says that accessory dwelling or missing the accessory, my question. This is already in the accessory.
Yeah, like as soon as the building is under construction, then pull out there and take the gross square feet and that's, and that's, that's where I got.
I'm just asking.
That's where I got the number.
Okay. Also, I think they should say enclosed screen porch.
What do you want to say?
Enclosed.
Screened electricity lighting?
Closed screen porch, 256 square feet.
Okay.
Anybody? Second on the, uh, second, okay, final fact. All right. I'm going to approve a special permit for accessory dwelling in 81 Norwell Avenue with the following conditions, in addition to the standard conditions for accessory dwellings approved by the planning board at public hearing on 12/17/15. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall substantially conform to upper technical plans submitted with the application consisting of you from the street, sheet A1 new house for 81 Norwell Ave, G2 new garage slash apartment, second floor plan dated 4/22/2019, G1 first floor plan new garage slash apartment dated 4/22/2019, G3 front elevation new garage apartment dated 5/16/2019, G4 right and rear evaluation new garage apartment dated 5/13/2019, ABI dated 2/14/22, received by the planning board 2/28/22, AV2 dated 2/7/22, received by planning board 3/1/22, all by two-way design. A1 new remodeling dated 3/2/22, received by the planning board on March 3, 2022. A1 new remodeling dated 3/2/2022, received by the planning board on 3/9/22. Site plan for Mary Ann Lewis, 81 Norwell Ave, City mass by Warwick and Associates, Inc., dated March 29, 2019, and certified block number by Warwick Associates dated 11/18/2019. Two, the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling is limited to one in the location and size indicated on the floor plan submitted with the application. Three, no further expansion of the accessory dwelling floor area is allowed without further review by the planning board. Four, upon occupancy of the accessory dwelling, the applicant shall provide a notarized affidavit that she is living in one of the dwelling units. A yearly certification that the owner occupies one of the dwelling units must be provided by March 1 yearly. Five, all requirements of the Board of Health, Building Department, Sunboard Appeals, Department of Health Works, Fire Department, and other time agencies must be met prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling. Six, the accessory dwelling shall conform to all applicable standards in the building plumbing, electrical, mechanical, fire, health codes, and bylaws. Seven, water connection must meet all requirements of the DPW water division for the accessory dwelling. The DPW is requiring a separate water service for the accessory dwelling. Eight, any lighting installed shall be downlighting to not shed light on abutting properties. Nine, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 AM weekdays at 8:00 AM on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 PM or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal stays and federal holidays. Construction includes item of vehicles, materials, et cetera, et cetera, which is the move forward at this point. Ten, runoff from the proposed accessory dwelling shall not be increased from the property. Eleven, erosion and sedimentary control devices shall be installed to prevent any erosion or sedimentation from leaving the site during construction. Silverslots shall be used as necessary. All right, Karen? Items?
I wanted to say something like the attic of the accessory dwelling shall remain as uninhabitable space and a trowel shall be established on the stair side of the accessory dwelling to mitigate the view.
Change the light bulbs.
And the light, lighting needs to be dealt with.
But could I add?
See, in a lowest fall, is it, is there like 25 watt bulb?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I have.
Okay.
Could I just say that under nothing existing light bulb shall be changed?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Could we just say that on condition eight with the lighting, existing light bulbs shall be changed?
Yeah. Just an equivalent one.
Yeah, because I have all those different.
I don't think you want to say any type of level because then you could be potentially liable.
Yeah, all right.
Well, how are you, how are you doing? What, a 25 watt LED light? What a twenty-five watt LED. Might have half a neighborhood. So I'm saying we have to have some lower level.
Well, how about to lower than the existing level?
We we have to use terms like reasonable to to change to accommodate or reasonable dimming dimmer.
To the million inspectors. Seven.
Yes, sir.
Uh lighting is measured in low end, not wattage. Because you could have a twenty-five watt LED. Ten times.
So you know, if somebody got, we know it's fine, thank you.
Low end, okay.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything else that we want to add to this?
Who had the landscape screening?
I said a trowel shall be established on the stair side of the accessory dwelling to mitigate the view.
On the stair side you said Karen?
Yeah, on the stair side. I I don't know which is right left. I don't want to say right left. I wanted to say we want to be specific.
On the deck, okay.
On the stair side of the accessory dwelling.
On the deck.
On the stair side of the accessory dwelling, on the deck.
Yes.
Yep. And?
Um, I mean, I'm just, I'm still concerned because it could have missed Demick's point about the loss of privacy in the backyard. I mean. Let's let's ask for a landscape mitigation plan. Or some sort of hedging or something.
Right.
Proximity in the massive building really does seem like that's a legitimate issue.
Yep.
It could be conditioned that the parties are amenable to it. I think that that would be a good condition that I think you feel better about.
What you think we should put in that gross fast would be acceptable.
Well, I don't, I don't really want to take the role.
Okay. Fair enough.
I think the condition should be the applicant should consult with the immediate neighbors and come up with an acceptable landscape and, you know, mitigation plan. And report back to the board.
If if I may on that. I I think that. That that's going, opening up a can of worms and I'm really not comfortable going down that path. I mean. To 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 consult with the folks that I'm happy, everyone's got a different idea about what should be planted there. I mean. There's no, I don't foresee that there's going to be a consensus on that. It does meet the setbacks. There is, in my opinion, you know, acceptable landscape in the back with all due respect to my neighbor. Um. You know, there's there's what's back there is not sort of something that you would be out of bed or homes and gotten, you know, so.
That's, that's, no, don't go there.
No, I know, I'm just saying, but it's 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 I think it's difficult to 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 gain a consensus on that. And I would, I would ask the board to please respectfully just rest with the idea that it complies with the setbacks.
And and you'll just have to understand that you might have a neighbor to the side that couldn't be potentially agreed. But that's up to either parties to figure out.
Okay.
I I I think it would be good for the town to potentially try to ameliorate that issue if it could be conditioned if people are willing to. I think that's not.
Well, would you be willing to um have an acceptable plan? Um with the, talking to the town player, I thought what would be best to put back there?
I'm I'm happy to consult with the town planner on what what is reasonable to to put back there.
Can I just clarify my point though? I'm I'm not talking about back there. I'm talking about particularly Mrs. Demick, I think he was on the side. I've seen pictures of the site in the back and I would agree that there's really in existing conditions that we need to put a a lot of screening back in that area.
Okay.
She had a concern because she has a usable, well, constructed, using yard that I think is more of an issue.
Right.
And I believe that that's on the side of property. I don't know what's lots, but.
On the side.
If if I.
Which side?
Which side?
Right.
The stairs.
We're looking at the stairs.
It's the stair side too.
Stairs go right to the property line.
Right. So if I, if I may, sir. It's it's I it's all been surveyed out. The the actual area that beyond to the, if you're looking at it to the left of the bowl is is for property. And I appreciate what my neighbors are saying, but at the same time, in terms of mitigation, I think it's unreasonable. I mean, things are so expensive today to sort of have me assume to put up a fence in to replace their fence or to put up a fence on their property that that never existed. It feels a little bit like a holdup.
You coming in half the time, you designing all this stuff and asking for forgiveness and permission. What can you tell you should have started in the beginning? It's neither here nor there because you didn't.
So is the applicant shall work with the town planner to come up with an acceptable landscape plan?
Yes.
Um, do you want to put the timeframe on it?
Um, on about finished by May thirty-first.
I think that's not really reasonable.
Probably July fourth. September first?
In terms of, I mean, stock is low, we've heard because of the pandemic.
You know, we we were talking about.
The plan. Oh, all right.
Plan should be come. Thirty days, what do you have to do?
Last day.
I won't ever see.
It was a month, April to May.
To come up with an acceptable land landscape for forty-five days after approval?
Can we say July first?
Yeah.
July first?
Yeah. Forty-five days after approval.
Oh, forty-five days after approval.
Yeah.
So the applicant shall work with the town planner to come up with an acceptable landscape plan forty-five days after approval.
It's Mr. Hearn again. All right, Mr. Hearn.
Did you finish, did you finish your, did you finish your condition motion?
No. We're we're still.
No, it's not closed.
We're working on the publication yet. We're working on the motion.
We're working on the motion.
Well, that's a new step.
Here, our first one is finished here. It's supposed to be habitable because you get into all the different definitions.
Because I, that first one, many talked about shouldn't be in increased on the, it should probably be finished as opposed to habitable.
Which one?
Just in terms of how definition feel of everything.
What, which number?
On the condition, the first condition.
What condition?
The first added condition.
The first added.
Yes, condition.
And what, what are the four potential conditions?
What I'm, what I'm suggesting is that it say ha- um finished as opposed to habitable. Just because. Because.
You made the whole condition.
Sorry.
Are we talking about the attic one?
Yes.
The attic of the accessory dwelling shall remain as uninhabitable space. You want to say unfinished.
Unfinished, yes. That seems more consistent with everything because arguably, yeah.
You're both.
Right.
Unfinished and uninhabitable. Habitable sounds like it's sort of, yeah.
Right. It is done unfinished, you know, it's more.
Are we all set with this?
I think I've got it all.
All right. Is there a? Second on the? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right.
All right.
Do you understand that there is an um? An appeal hearing with this?
Yes, that was explained to me today.
And I just have to say for the record that when this apartment, you knew this apartment was going in that in more. In twenty nineteen. I wish, I truly wish you wasn't really, and for your neighbors, that you come to us. We did not miss one single meeting, we called it. We waited the whole, the whole time, the whole time.
We're here.
So. I prepare down for your neighbors, I do. And for you as well. Because this this shouldn't happen. We should walk out. We're set. They're not up. All right, so I have fourteen days.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Rebecca.
I'll get her. All right, here we go with the second. This is not, you know, our whole community, it's just us. Why don't I, what we're going to do, the public are going to do it, too, they're going to do it too. Okay, it's a public meeting. It's a public meeting, of course, you have like the public is here. All right. Do we have Rebecca yet?
No.
All of them. We do not have the guests, right? Well, when she shows up, let us know. Okay, um. This is recommendations to town meeting.
She's here.
Oh, she's here?
Yeah.
Okay. Rebecca, you here?
There you are. Yeah.
Yeah. Rebecca, we just need to see you and your, um, your be able to unmute and unmute yourself. Seth will make you co-host.
Ms. Ms. Lewis or?
We just need to see you with your cameras if possible.
I believe we did just lose Ms. Lewis, so I'll keep an eye on her Omega co-host and.
Thank you, Seth. Yeah, we do have to take world public. Rebecca. All right.
I believe Ms. Lewis is now here. Ms. Lewis, if you want to um unmute yourself, start, there you go.
There you are. Hi, hi.
Hi, guys.
Hi. Okay, um, this is a discussion, recommendations to town meeting. Zoning article is proposed to be April eleventh twenty twenty-two annual town meeting. All right, section four forty-five business desk districts.
Which is Article seventeen.
Article seventeen. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Master and Law's chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article on February tenth twenty twenty-two and continued until February twenty-four twenty twenty-two when the hearing was closed. On March tenth twenty twenty-two, the board voted unanimously to support passage of the article at the eleventh, April eleventh twenty twenty-two annual town meeting. Changes to this article allow for the listed accessory uses in this section to be included in Village Center and Neighborhood District's VCN. This is a housekeeping article as the VCN should have previously been included. The planning board supports this article. And the article requires a two-thirds vote. Do you all support this?
Yes.
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 All right, so do you, Rebecca, we need to go world hall?
Okay.
Okay, okay, Ms. Barvin?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next one is Article eighteen, amended zoning by law, section six ten point one lot area and lot width. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Master and Law's chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article on February tenth twenty twenty-two and continued until February twenty-four twenty twenty-two when the hearing was closed. On March tenth twenty twenty-two, the board voted unanimously to support the passage of the article at the April eleventh twenty twenty-two annual town meeting. The changes to this article allow for a lot with criteria to be added to help prevent rat tail lots. And where the rat tails are not prevented by adding the criteria of a thirty-foot diameter circle to be drawn tangent to the exterior property line. The area that does not meet the requirement cannot be counted toward the buildable lot area. The planning board supports this article. This article requires a two-thirds vote. Are you all in support of this? Ms. Barvin? Yes. Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, Hannah. Article nineteen. Amend zoning by law, section eight hundred, nonconforming structures and uses. The planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Master and Law's chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article on February tenth twenty twenty-two and continued until February twenty-four twenty twenty-two when the hearing was closed. On March tenth twenty twenty-two, the board voted unanimously to support the passage of the article at the April eleventh twenty twenty-two annual town meeting. The changes to this article allow for the byright window of redevelopment of a damaged property from two years to four years, providing a more realistic timeframe in which to accomplish a restoration before the effort falls to the zoning board appeals. It also allows for all time periods to be waived with a special permit from Board of Appeals. The new provisions apply only to any lawful structure or lawful use of land or structure existing in whole or substantial property as of the effective date of the bylaw. The Board of Appeals can grant a request of relief only if it finds repair, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural changes will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The intent is to provide a continuing opportunity for derelict properties to be rehabilitated while preventing inappropriate redevelopment of properties that would result in undesirable conditions or situations. The planning board supports this article. The article requires a two-thirds vote. Okay, people?
Did I um? Did I edit this a little? Suggest a minute. Um. On the first sentence. Um, we say as of right, um, from two years to four years. Uh, keep going. Um, yeah. Provide some realistic timeframe. Before, then I would say. The, that before any rebuilt effort would then require approval of the zoning board of appeals. Effort clause is kind of. You get that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Then the only other question here, should we just put Ronnie in front of the Board of Appeals in the other two other missions?
I missed that, sorry.
Just call, call him out as zoning board of appeals, he's got a board of appeals.
Okay, yeah, I can do that, okay. All right, you have called the roll, Sharon?
Yeah, Ms. Barvin?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Hannah. All in favor?
All right, so before we move into the next uh group of um articles. Um. Several things that we need to let you know and discuss. Um, the first is that we finally had a meeting with the moderator Seth Murray. Um, at at that time, it was present for myself and Patty, um, Town Council, and Jim Woodrow and Jim Toomey, the moderator. Uh, what? This is a precursor to the moderators meeting. Um, Jim Toomey says that he will go through each article and say what it does, why it's in the order it's in, and what happens if something passes and something doesn't pass. For for legal and clarity, he wants the articles as they're written right now in the draft warrant. So each each thing is their own article. So that's, that's the first thing. Um, the second thing is, is that we met uh with the Board of Selectmen the other night. It was a rather unpleasant meeting. Um, and based on that meeting, we decided to come up with a couple of changes. in the zoning bylaw. So, I've given everybody draft warrant. Of course, I can't find my copy. But, um, we changed the amount of square footage that both medical and recreational marijuana establishments are allowed to be. And that is, we changed it from 4,000 to 3,000.
All right, where, where are?
Your, your written, your written draft warrant articles, it states 3922.
So, what it's, oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, the red stuff is...
So, where's that change?
Hold on.
It's, it's... Change further, the 3,000 has changed further and...
It's a standard review, but before it is...
We're not going...
The size of MTC activities?
I see it, we're not going to...
No, I'm just, I'm telling you, I'm telling you basic. I'm telling you basic.
Yeah, it's change.
All this red has changed from what you previously saw. So, that's the first thing. That, that's a simple change. Okay? The next change is a change, the... We went a little bit more with, um... I'm gonna read the language. "No medical marijuana treatment center shall be located within 500 feet of the nearest point of the property line where the following activities occur." So, we put property line back in there. And then we put the same wording that's in the zoning bylaw right now for medical marijuana treatment center, for medical marijuana dispensaries. That's the current terminology. The 500-foot distance under this section is measured in a straight line from the nearest point to the property line to the proposed. And I put the current terminology, medical marijuana treatment center. So, we conceded to make that change as well.
So, how's that measure? To the center, does that mean to the property line of the center? Or is that this like, you know, center of the doorway?
No, it's not the center of the doorway.
It's not the... I'm gonna be a bit desperate.
So, from the nearest property line to the nearest property line of this...
No, to the building.
The building to, to what?
What would you like it to say?
Well, what was intended? Was it building?
I'm telling you, I copied this exactly from the existing bylaw, so I'm not sure.
So, there was some, there was some...
I'm not 100% sure what was intended in the existing bylaw.
What was the discussion that changed?
What was the discussion they wanted at property line to property line? And I, we conceded to change it to what was in the existing bylaw.
That makes it more conservative, actually, because originally it was 500 feet
It does, yeah, yes.
to like the front door, so now it's pushed off to the property line. Right, yeah, but it's a property line.
But we don't have to do it at property line to property line. It's whatever the board decides that they want to do.
I know, but you said that the changes made is resulting from the selection of the...
Right, and this is one of those. This is one of them.
This is not what they asked for, this was...
Yes, and we, we do not do what they, because they don't have...
I wasn't there, I'm trying to get...
They don't have the, you know, this is what they said they want. They said they wanted some other things. And they said that they didn't really want, um, they didn't want marijuana in the, the business districts. And we, because marijuana is a retail business, we decided we weren't going to do that. We did not take out the language on waiver because Town Council advised us that act that protects the town. So, we kept that language in there as well.
And then I think this should say, from the nearest point of the property line to the nearest point of the medical marijuana center.
Aye.
The proposed center. I think property line to property line is the one that can be least deemed as far as like, oh, well, this isn't my front door, or this isn't center mass of my building. I just said the nearest point. Yeah.
Nearest point of the property line, nearest point of the proposed medical marijuana treatment.
Right, so we already draw the block, we go from the property line to the nearest point of the building.
All right, I'll make that change. And so, and then that kind of reiterates itself in number J. Number J was there, I just redlined it all because I, after a discussion with Town Council at quarter six tonight, I just cleaned up a little bit of language in here. So, I just, I just read...
Okay, so, this should say within 500 feet of the MTC and the property line of the daycare preschool, right? That we're trying to do?
No.
No?
It just show, I, it show, you're trying to, um, in the application, you're supposed to identify all the pre-existing...
Oh, okay, just identify.
Right, you're, you're identifying pre-existing, you know, all these things that we list. And so, um, I reviewed, she reviewed this language this afternoon, I just decided to put the whole thing in red so you would know I made a couple of, I made a couple of corrections and spelling errors, et cetera.
And this, this term, 500-foot buckers zone? Is that defined or similar?
No, it's not. Buckers zone is not designed, I, I mean, I could, I, that's what I questioned. So, why don't we just say 500-foot demarcation?
Well, you could just define it, right? 500 foot.
We'll say 500-foot demarcation.
You just want to make sure it's, it's interpreted and measured the same way we're...
Right, exactly. So, I'll run that over with her again, you know, tomorrow. That's the only changes that we made in the medical marijuana. And again, as, every time we go to a meeting, we try, we, we listen. And, you know, if we think it's appropriate, we, we will make the change.
Maybe for the last sentence, I know, what you're trying to say with the different meaning, I would just say the 500-foot distance stipulated
Okay.
in this section above. So, that it refers back to what? Yeah, go ahead, she's got to say. Hypothetically, the final, here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I will review that with her again tomorrow. That's all the changes that we made to the medical marijuana treatment centers.
Article 20.
So, that's Article 20.
Do you want me to actually read this?
So, I would suggest that maybe we go, all right, go by article, let's get those for this?
Yes, yes. This is Article 20, amended zoning bylaw, section Medical 440.2, Medical Marijuana Treatment Centers, MTC. Planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Master General Laws, Chapter 48, a public hearing was held on this article on February 10, 2022, and continued until February 24, 2022, when the hearing was closed. On March 10, 2022, the board voted unanimously to support the passage of the article at the 11, of April 11, 2022 annual town meeting. The changes to this article provide for deleting the existing registered marijuana dispensary definition in Section 200 definitions. Registered marijuana dispensary in Section 420 table of uses, and deleting the existing Section 440.2 registered marijuana dispensaries, and replacing them with a new definition, medical marijuana treatment center, MTC, definition in Section 200. A new line for medical marijuana treatment centers in Section 420 table of uses, and a new Section 440.2 medical marijuana treatment center, MTC. This allows for updated terminology that has been established by the Cannabis Control Commission regulations to be implemented. The planning board supports this article. It requires a two-thirds vote in town meeting. All right, the, uh, call the role. Ms. Barban?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lampert?
Yes.
Ms. Bornstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, Yanis. All in favor? All right, Article 21.
Article 21, um, so Article 21 is about use recreational marijuana establishments. There were, we have three versions of this report to town meeting. And so, um, I didn't hear comments from everybody. I heard comments from some people. And so, the first, version one is the original art, is the original report that I sent out. Version two is, uh, is report, um, version that Steve Pritchard drafted. Version three is a version that Patty and I drafted, based on Steve Pritchard's, um, version two. We, we took out some of the stuff from your, um, from, from, that you had recommended, Steve. So, um... You know, I'm sorry I didn't get this to people sooner, but, you know, we, I've been totally swamped. So, um... I think that the board needs to decide which, which version you would like to, um, recommend to town meeting.
So, can I say that, uh, it was one of the most, um, the longest nights of my life would be the selecting with Stuart, Hillary, and then Broskett. It was... Uh huh, in which order?
For doing this?
Yes. Uh, when we let you present this, it was, um...
Didn't we do it on their request?
Uh, well, I guess, you know, we, you, I can tell you that I really felt at some point, um, we just could have called it in. Um, there wasn't a lot of, of substantial back and forth. Really, my meeting was with Mr. Binani with some, um, input from other board members. We had a spirited discussion that we would agree to disagree on several points. And, uh, we are adults and we, we can do that. So, based on that, we went to speak to Mr. Trumie today, as Karen said, to go over how we were gonna present this, why we presented it the way we would, and that he was going to keep it very tight with on how it went along and what would happen if something happened and something did not happen. This could be really quick or really long, depending on the vote. Mr. Trumie is well aware of the complications and complexities of the issue for us, and we understand that everybody has issues. So, we can go through the real three. Maybe up to the board to decide which one that you'd like to have us present at our meeting.
I have to say like version three?
Well, you have to read all of them, basically.
So, thus, we made a few changes to the recreational marijuana, um, as well. In the, their draft, um, warrant dated 39, we did same 3,000 square foot that we did in the recreational marijuana. We did the same 500-foot property line. So, I will make sure that the, the language matches medical and this match. We, we, we changed that as well. And that is, that's what we changed in, that's what we changed in the recreation.
And we changed the number of square foot based on the opponent's application. And then...
Based on what?
It was originally 10,000 square feet, uh, the proponent of citizens, no?
No, that is cultivation, excuse me.
This is...
That's right down.
No.
This is, we, we based it on, I did an analysis
Of liquor stores.
of liquor stores in situ.
Yeah.
So, freestanding, I basically averaged the freestanding liquor stores. And 3,000 square foot would be quite in line with that.
That's fine.
I, I have the backup for that. And I did call down to Marshville, the one, um, the one retail store that is at the old Chrysler dealership on 139, is 3,400 square feet. The, the retail part, that does have a processing part in the back. But that's, so I think 3,000 square feet for situ is a reasonable number.
So, drafted version three, why don't you take down the version two?
Uh, I took out, um... Be clear, the planning board is not endorsing or recommending the elimination of existing beds for adultless marijuana establishments. I, I definitely took that out. What we left here was the planning... The planning board is providing a proposed zoning bylaw modification to be used in conjunction with the town's vote to lift the existing bans. And the reason I, 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 I did this in city through many, many meetings, um... It isn't that we're not endorsing or recommending, we are endorsing inland use. We are not endorsing marijuana establishments. We're endorsing buckles on that land, that's without purview.
Yeah, I, I was trying to be clear that we're making no opinion
Mm-hmm, and we're not.
in this zoning bylaw about lifting or keeping the ban. This is only a bylaw that could be used if people decided to lift the ban so that they would have appropriate zoning in place and know what that is in order to make that decision.
And I think that we, we covered that by taking that, like you said, that's why we put all three, three versions up here. Uh, because if you read the whole thing, we, we cut a lot of it. We, we took out a lot of the only's because I feel that that limits us. Uh, but to the extent that the town votes to allow for marijuana establishments, zoning bylaw changes as written are recommended to the town if the town's existing beds on adultless marijuana establishments are overturned by town voters. So, I guess the way we should do this is, do you want to go paragraph by paragraph?
I just, I just want to know what you changed. My head with these.
Do you want to read? If you, if you like.
Which one you want to read?
Well, why don't we start with the first one, that will work our way, but it's been, but we'll...
Yeah, we'll talk through.
Yeah, we all can, we all like.
Yeah, we don't...
Let's try to settle on the version.
Yes, do, let me start with three, because...
Start with three, okay.
Start with three. All right, this is Article 21. Planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Master General Laws, Chapter 48, a public hearing was held on this article on February 10, 2022, continued until February 24, 2022, when the public hearing was closed. On March 10, 2022, the board voted We don't know yet. We don't know yet. Have voted somehow, some way, passage of the article or not, at the April 11, 2022 annual town meeting. The proposed article is the product that resulted from the town's commitment in response to the indefinite postponement and referral to the planning board of a citizen's petition at the October 26, 2021 special fall town meeting to develop adequate zoning regulations in the event that the town voted to remove the existing ban and allow for adult-use marijuana establishments in limited areas in town. The changes proposed in this zoning article provide for adding a new section to the zoning bylaw, section 440.3 marijuana establishment, establishments, adult-use marijuana establishments to include definitions in Section 200 definitions. A table of uses for the different types of marijuana establishments found in Section 420 table of uses, and new section 440.3 defining the requirements for town approval of marijuana establishments. To the extent that the town votes to allow marijuana establishments, the zoning bylaw changes as written are recommended to the town if the town's existing bans on adult-use marijuana establishments are overturned by town voters. These changes, if coupled with a vote to remove the existing marijuana bans, provides adequate regulation for illegal land use and controls for marijuana establishment. The planning board is providing proposed zoning bylaw modifications to be used in conjunction with the town's vote to lift the existing bans. The planning board
Does or does not?
does or does not support this article.
And this requires a two-thirds vote?
That's right. Okay. Call the role.
One, every...
On a discussion, huh?
Our discussion, one of the...
It's a discussion. It's a discussion.
Yeah, to decide if you like what version. I don't know, but that's just my opinion.
Now, I, I would change the second, the open paragraph where it says the planning board is providing proposed zoning bylaw modifications to be used to inform town voters in conjunction with the town's vote to lift the existing ban, bans. Because really, this is intended, there are going to be two sides to this thing. And if people are voting to lift the ban, then they should be voting at the same time to put out the zoning.
Right, yeah.
That's all this is. That's why I think we need to make the first point.
That's all this is.
So, can you, to be used as information in conjunction, is that what you said?
To be used to inform town voters in conjunction with the town's vote to, and I would say, keep or lift, right? The existing bans.
Okay, I got it.
I think would that change, I think, I think we can. And I think that's okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, the call a roll now, if you want, if it's up or down.
Changes on, anybody likes them or not? Yeah, that sounds fine for version three, even though version three doesn't explicitly say that this is an endorsement of lifting the ban. And that I don't think that, I don't think that we have to say that because a, a well-informed town meeting goer will understand that this was working with the applicant to, to do it. So I like version three and with Steve's.
And, um, I think three is, is the strongest version. I just consider that Steve's changes were good and I think you guys worked and that's a document. And now we've come back full circle, it's been, I think, and that, it's great.
Yeah, all right, Rebecca?
I'm, I like three.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, you want to say, aren't you?
I'll say, yeah. I beg to perceive input to make it a better version for you.
All right, so now we need a real call a roll. Okay, Ms. Verhyn.
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard.
Yes.
Ms. Lambert.
Yes.
Mr. Borstein.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Thank you, Nana, strong favor.
Okay. All right, now we have, next. Next is article twenty-two. Um, so there's been a slight, changed this one very slightly in terms of, changed the language in warrant. This is to remove the temporary moratorium that expired, um, you know, back in two thousand and eighteen. But I added a bit at the end and add the existing definitions in section two hundred definitions. I added that there in the event that article, the preceding article does not pass. We don't lose all the existing definitions. The article, I don't know why definitions were put in a temporary moratorium, but that's where the definitions were. I just want to take those existing definitions and put them in section two hundred in the event that the other article fails.
The point in fact, the moratorium no longer has yet, it's expired already.
Right, but there's definitions in that.
But that's the only place the definitions were.
That's the only place the definitions were. So I just want to, want to be able to move them if, if I need to. But yes, you're absolutely correct, the temporary moratorium is long since expired.
Right.
Are you ready, Barbara? Ms. Verhyn?
Aren't you going to read?
I'm going to read. I forgot you had to read it. Article twenty-two. I don't remember. And zoning by law, section one ninety-one, temporary moratorium. Planning board hereby reports that in accordance with Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article on February tenth, twenty-twenty-two, and continued until February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, when the hearing was closed. On March tenth, twenty-twenty-two, the board voted to, um, but support passage of the article for the April eleventh in town meeting. The changes to this article provide for deleting the temporary moratorium on the sale and distribution of adult use recreational marijuana as the time period for it has expired, and adding the existing definitions in the section to section two hundred twenty, to two hundred definitions. The temporary moratorium time has passed and this section is no longer relevant. The definitions existing in this section are proposed to be moved to section two hundred in the event the changes in section four forty-point-three are not passed, thus allowing for the existing definitions to be retained. The planning board supports, supports or whatever, this article requires a two thirds vote at town meeting.
Okay.
Anybody call a roll?
Yep.
Ms. Verhyn?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Borstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Thank you, Nana, strong favor.
Okay, the next one is article twenty-three, prohibition of marijuana establishments.
And if you want to do that, so.
Help with, I mean, this is written as more.
All right. The planning board hereby reports, um, that in accordance with Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, a public hearing was held on this article on February tenth, twenty-twenty-two, and continued until February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, when the hearing was closed. On March tenth, twenty-twenty-two, the board voted to support on support passage of the article at the April eleventh, twenty-twenty-two annual town meeting. The changes to this article provide for deleting the prohibition of marijuana establishments. To the extent the town wants to allow for marijuana establishments, the ban must be lifted and the zoning as proposed passed. This prohibition shall not be construed to affect the medical use of marijuana. The planning board supports, does not support this article.
Can you roll call it?
Yep.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Good. Ms. Verhyn?
Yes.
Mr. Pritchard?
No.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Borstein?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Uh, yes.
Okay, it's about, uh, four in favor to one now.
All right, all right, so I don't believe, I mean, what I, what I want to do is fill in all the stuff. So at the next meeting, you'll sign all these, you'll sign the reports to town meeting.
Yeah.
I will change, change the reports. And then this is the, this is what I'm going to send out to, so the advisory board and select board know, know how you vote. I'm going to send the actual report so that they know where you stand on the issue. So I will be doing that and getting the revised language to Nancy for the warrant all by Monday because the, well, the advisory boards aren't voted, but they may want to revoke something with the changes that we're proposing in the warrant. The select board is going to be voting next week.
And we will be reinvolved.
Did the advisory board understand what we were voting on?
Well, that was another very interesting meeting, so.
That was.
I mean, just in terms of what the voting positions to.
Yes, I believe they understood that they.
Yeah.
I, I do believe they understood.
All right.
And, but I mean, we will, we will provide them your, your reports so that if they decide to change their mind or something, because the warrant, the warrant gets put out to, it gets sent to the printer, I, next week sometime. Because it has to be available so many days before town meeting. So those are the reports to town meeting.
Who deals with, excuse me, who deals with the general bylaw?
That's an article, but that doesn't need, that doesn't need a report to town meeting.
And who presents that up? Selectmen?
No, it's sponsored by the planning board. So we, we'll have to, we'll talk about it at the next meeting when we do all the signing.
All right.
You know, who's going to present what, et cetera. And we can talk about, um, how you want to present it to town meeting. I mean, we do have a PowerPoint presentation. And if you think the PowerPoint ought to be done at town meeting, I think we can talk about that all at the next meeting. Unless it makes any strong opinions now, but you're going to have to sign, do a lot of signing it. Okay?
All right. So we're all set with this and we can move on to, um, a discussion on the MBTA communities?
Yes.
Because we all have to go before, oh, well, you and I will go before the selectmen on Tuesday night?
Yes, I'm on the select board agenda on Tuesday night. As part of the requirements for, um, part of the requirements for this one stop for growth grants, you have to do a presentation to the select board by May second of twenty-twenty-two and fill out an online form for this MBTA community stuff. I've given you a little bit of a fact sheet and I've given you the two, um, you know, I've given you the draft compliance document and the draft, how to comply in twenty-twenty-two. So the Acts of twenty-twenty put a new section three A to the zoning act, that's chapter forty-eight, requiring MBTA communities to have a zoning district in which multi-family zoning is permitted by right and meets other requirements. If you do not comply, you're not eligible for housing choice initiatives, local capital funds, or mass infrastructure program grants. When I went to one of the seminars, they said they may look very disfavorably on a town for other grants as well. So how to comply?
Sorry.
Now, I know, I, I, I know, that, that was kind of hilarious, that's kind of what I thought.
It's hard, no.
The draft guidelines are out for review, so yeah, I have, the presentation has to be, the draft guidelines has to be done to the select board by five-two. There has to be a complete, um, community notification form. And you have to submit G I S parcel apps if notified. I don't believe Situate's been notified, so we must be all good with our G I S parcels. What does this mean for Situate? Zoning act requires MBTA communities to have one district of reasonable size in which multi-family housing is permitted by right that meets other criteria. Minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, not more than a half mile from a commuter rail station. No age restrictions suitable for families. So Situate has two commuter rail stations. Situate has eight thousand two hundred sixty housing units per the twenty-twenty census. So state determined that there's a need of one thousand two hundred thirty-nine housing units in multi-family district that are of scale, density, and character consistent with the community goals.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you tell me how that, four thirty-nine, what's the math on that?
What's the math on that is?
What is that number?
It's fifteen units per acre by fifty acres and something else thrown in. It's in, it's in some of that literature that I gave you.
Yeah. I've got to need like.
Oh, it's, um.
Isn't it twenty percent?
Fifteen percent, fifteen percent because we're, we're a commuter rail community.
Yep.
So we have to have fifteen percent, so that's where the number came from. It's a gross calculation.
So fifty acres times fifteen times point one five?
Yeah, I think so. It's, it's in the guidance where it came from. So reasonably.
How, how close are we to that right now?
We haven't done that calculation, Steve.
Okay, that's why you count with that.
That's, that's going to be the next step. After you fill out the form to do these things, we're going to have to determine where, how, do we meet, how close we come to meeting this number? And how close the state thinks we are? And if we have to increase zoning areas to accommodate, it's, these units do not have to be built. They have to be zoned for.
Right, I give eleven twenty-five.
Well, hey, this is the number that came up.
Who came up with that?
The state.
The state. Is it state help page?
Yes.
They only have it. I know, I'm trying to, I'm looking that up.
I don't know. It's, I mean, page, page five, the state's number one.
I work for the state.
And that's.
I mean.
So you have to multiply the number of housing units in the community by point one five, so it's the number of housing units in the community. So they eight thousand two hundred and whatever.
Fifty.
By fifteen percent because we're a commuter rail community.
That's right.
Steve filled it out.
So that's, that's a different number.
Okay.
What do you get?
What do you get?
I get their number.
Okay.
Oh, that's what we have to comply with.
Right.
Okay, so that's what we have to.
I don't know where the few.
All right, so I will brush up on that presentation.
We really have to comply with it if we actually want to do this.
I am told, I am told the town wants to apply for Mass Works grants and One Step for Growth grants.
Yeah, hard pass.
So.
No way.
So let me finish, okay?
We've got, they need to give us like a whole like herd of unicorns to, we give up anymore like zoning like.
It's right. And you've gotten. We, we've gotten, we've gotten Mass Works grants in the past, that's what paid for Cedar Point. And so that's why, I'm, I'm just following the directive I've been given. Reasonable size is not left, not less than fifty contiguous acres or one-tenth of the land area within half a mile of an MBTA station with a unit capacity of fifteen percent for a commuter rail community. Um, they say unit capacity must take into account developable land as well as height limits at bags parking, inadequate water, or wastewater wetlands, water bodies. And they say it's, it's not production, it's a target.
So what it says, inadequate water and wastewater. To the extent that we don't have any wastewater like or Situate then gives out.
Right, but when, when I went to one of these seminars, it says, you know, they see nothing wrong with having to build if, oh, a wastewater treatment facility for your site. You don't have to have the infrastructure available right there, right now.
But you have to have it to build it?
Yeah, correct, correct, but they, you don't have to have it right here, right now.
Will they give us money to sue her that way?
Well, that's why you want to apply for Mass Works grants, so, I mean, um, so if the number of the multi-family units that can be constructed is less than the minimum unit capacity, we may have to change the boundaries of a district. As of right means construction occupancy of multi-family housing allowed without need to obtain discretionary permit or approval. That means site plan review is allowed. You can.
Can you just have the MBTA planners like come down and tell us how we need to zone out a town?
You can review vehicular access, circulation, or architectural design of buildings, screening of adjacent properties. Basically all the things that you already reviewed in site plan approval anyway. Minimum gross density can be district-wide of fifteen units per acre, subject to further limits like the Wetlands Protection Act and Title V. A compliant multi-family district cannot be age restricted, it must be suitable for families with children. Zoning cannot include age restrictions, size of the units, number of bedrooms, size of bedrooms, or number of occupants. D H C D will make determinations on compliance by request of a community following criteria and a schedule. We need maps, reasonable size metrics, district gross density, attestation, housing suitable for families, and the application is accurate.
Who's going to pay for this, the town that's going to go into doing all of this?
I don't know.
This is, this is an unfunded mandate.
So it is an unfunded mandate.
It's a mandate.
Excuse me?
It's, it's saying shall, the language does say shall. So they point out that it kind of is a.
It is. It is.
Yeah, but the consequences are you can't get money for it.
Right, the consequences are
It's like, whoa. Keep your money. It's a karate stick.
Oh, but they also say shall too.
Yeah.
And you must provide plans and an action plan for a commuter rail community and no later than July first, two thousand twenty-three. Any zoning amendments must be adopted by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four for commuter rail communities. So Situette presently has the N D T V district in Green Bush V C N with a density of sixteen units per acre by right, thirty-six units per special permit. This district is approximately nine point five acres. The North Situette V C N has an outer village with a density of fifteen units by right, twenty-four units by special permit. This is approximately twenty acres. We do have two other V C N districts, the G W B and G B C in Green Bush that allow for twelve units by right, twenty-four units by special permit for multifamily housing.
How many acres is that?
I did a, I did a very rough calculation, G B C is about thirty acres.
So we're pretty close to fifty if we
Yes, exactly.
Put it up and go at, at G B C.
Exactly.
At G B C, right?
North Situette Village Center does not allow for multifamily but mixed use. So I think after, the first step is to make the compliance for two thousand twenty-two because I'm told we will apply for these grants. The next step is going to be determining where the numbers stand and how the town might wanna comply. And as you have just indicated
Yes, we want to comply.
The easiest thing might be to do is change the G B C district to fifteen units by right from twelve.
That's easy.
That would be still a town meeting vote.
I know, but it's a housekeeping thing.
It, well, well.
More or less.
Not necessarily.
But, I mean, if, if you had to decide tomorrow, would that be the way that you would potentially like to try to figure out and proceed along? I mean, because I'll spend more time trying to figure out the, you know, what we
It seems like the path of least resistance.
It seems like the path
Right, Green Bush, right?
Right.
Like it doesn't address North Situette law.
But by changing
No, but if you have thirty acres in one district in Green Bush, you have nine in another and then you have twenty in North Situette, you're meeting, there's somewhere
You're spending fifty contiguous acres.
I know, but we can't, I mean, how can you really, how can we really do it? They, they do say every community is unique, they're gonna look at every individual situation. They say that they don't want these areas to be less than twenty-five contiguous acres. But the twenty acres that I, we did a rough calculation for, for North Situette, we excluded the um MBTA parking lot because you kinda have to.
Well, I would, I would, I wouldn't change anything, I would say this is how we comply, we got nine and a half here, we got twenty here. Is that good enough?
Well, I mean, that's
I wouldn't, I wouldn't Try it for
We can try, I mean, we can try going for that, but we cannot get, we cannot get that number of housing units in that, in that too little areas.
I know, you're saying if every community is different, they recognize that, the town will recognize this.
Okay, we can try.
But, but, why, I feel like we're shooting at a moving target.
I feel
Let's go in and say, this is what we can do. And if you can't live with that, tell us what you get me, right? What are these grants that they want to apply for?
I don't know.
What's the carrot on this one?
I, I don't know, except Mass Works is uh, you know, the town is in dire need of sewer and water improvements.
That's the one I would
And so Mass Works is, is, is a grant program for infrastructure and
Are we willing to take then the first step of having our town zoning be dictated by No, I'm saying the city of Austin? Because that's, that's eventually where this is going in like their master plan. I'm saying do that. Well, I'm just saying, don't do that, we already, we already have nine and a half acres that comply. Any, any Do you really agree with that, guys? And twenty acres that comply. Say that's how we're doing it, we're not changing anything else. But it's giving up the control of the zoning. No, it's not, it's already
No, it's not, because we've already, we've already zoned them.
Yeah, it's already zoned, definitely.
You're saying try that first.
Yeah, but
Yeah, but it once, once we get our, like, then it's gonna be harder to come off of it. So it's like, we lose, we lose control like of our, you know, what's dictated into us as zoning. And okay, we're an MBTA community, but I know plenty of people that just drive like, ooh, right across from Norwell and Lake Park and Green Bush or Marshville like in San Diego, right?
The host is an MBTA community too.
Yep, it's Marshville.
Co-asset is an MBTA community.
I'm asking the train station. What, oh, is it all the adjacent areas?
Yes, yes.
No, we're in a train station.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's
There, and still say, send these guys back in.
No, okay, on this one, Department of Housing, whatever, this is draft compliance guidelines. On page six, district one gross density. The zoning act defines gross density as a unit per acre density measurement that includes lean occupied by several points of way, any recreational, civic, commercial, and other non-residential uses. So would that increase? Would that add to what I favoraged? Or am I misreading that?
Well, it could, no, I haven't, I haven't really, I just didn't prelim, we just did a preliminary calculation one day to say
It's fine.
where are we? In approximately, how many acres do we have
Not enough.
in these areas that are already zoned to meet the requirements?
Well, I, I would disagree with you, I think we have, right? I think we should go and make the case that we've found out. We've already made those decisions that count. This is how it should improve, you know?
And we can try, we can try
Yes.
I know, I'm, I'm good, I've just had someone walking by me.
Oh. I mean, we can try, we can try that, Steve, we can try submitting what we already have and let them tell us, no, it's not, not enough, or
Look at all the kings and queens there, like
Yeah.
Come on, is that all, you know, throw in the kitchen sink, right?
Right, and you know, the North Situette playground. Yep.
We'll, we'll have to
Just, no, showing
That's in
Get the brown
The North Situette playground is not in the district. You know, you, North Situette has an inner village and an outer village.
And an outer village, alright.
And so we have, we have, we're gonna calculate it by
Well, maybe we need to change that too.
But I agree with Steve that, I think that, you know, we are very well ahead of the curve, I think, especially with movement.
Yep.
And if we extend that, uh, the zoning, I, I, I think, and tell them this is what we have, it would be a riverboat, I mean, we'll be in the water without boats. And just say, you know, this is what we have, and so we're not, no, we're not ready, and we're not westing, we're a teeny tiny little town, we don't have a lot of room. Uh, and we've, we've done the best we can, especially with our new zoning, and so perhaps say no to us.
Right, I
You wouldn't be afraid of that at all?
Alright, and may I ask a question?
Sure.
Where is our economic development planning person involved in this?
Well, I've mentioned this, yeah.
And?
Sounds like
I've mentioned it.
Believe me.
Yeah, I mean, um, for what we're talking about here, how does this tie into affordable housing, was it at all?
It doesn't, it's, this is not dictating affordable housing at all.
Look, but
We have
The way we zoned it, we shouldn't be getting affordable housing.
You're absolutely correct, because we have inclusionary zoning now, anything over six units, on that six unit
Right.
that has to be afforded.
Right.
So we have put our own, our own affordable component into this
Tell it back to
by our zone as well. They don't, they don't, this, this doesn't tie in with forty B.
Oh, we can tell them we don't.
We can tell them anyway.
They, they, I, I can tell them, yeah, but they made it clear
Yeah, that's what everything is.
They made it clear that this is not about affordable housing.
Okay.
It does, so
This is about the lack of housing
Housing production.
in housing productions, about lack of
Right.
housing in the state.
But I would, I would sort of lost the whole thing to say, you know, it's, it's been our plan. That's why we zoned it that way. That, that will meet the objectives that you're talking about, at the same time meet other objectives, which include affordable housing, even though they may not be deserved.
Okay, I can do that.
And I think if it's on a community by community basis, like making that case shows a, you know, this town has for the last decade or more is committed to smart growth principles
Yep.
Doing all the right things we're supposed to do, but, you know, our reality is we can't say, oh, here's fifty contiguous acres for all of our towns, so
Exactly, Steve just have the
So
All the shit which you got.
Right. The regulations are not final yet, they're still draft, under comment. But, you know, you have to do this one part by, by May second and then we'll have to start working on um the information to show, to show it for the next time.
For the next time.
And so as we develop the information, we'll of course be talking about it as a group because I also believe that the, this impacts the master plan as well too.
Sure.
So 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 it all, it all ties in together and so we all have to consider it together.
Yep. I think the master plan should be an attachment to your plan.
So that's where we are with this at the present time. And, you know, it's gonna be a hot topic, um, you know, in the news in the next few weeks because the regulations are gonna be coming out, I got a phone call from the paper today and they're asking me how we're gonna do it. I said, come me back next week. I mean, I'm talking about it tonight with the planning board, I'm talking about it next week with the select board. But I don't think a lot of communities really know how they're going to address it.
Yeah, and I think we're, we're a smaller community, so it's gonna be a lot harder.
Yeah, we are.
Think about Co-asset trying to do this.
Oh, they, they were bored when they found out, they were
I mean, because they have to have a continuum that they're looking at, you know? And that bigger MBTA communities like places like that have a much better chance of
Correct.
Correct, and so, you know, you should also make the case that, you know, they're sort of discriminating against small communities by setting these absolute targets, right? Steve, they're not discriminating against smaller communities, they're forcing smaller communities to get in line with the zoning that larger communities have. No, that's not, no, that, that wasn't my point. That's really what it is. No, I mean, the point was that they're trying to take one standard and make it fit all communities, right?
Yeah, they do say, they, they do say that they will look at communities individually, so
Yeah, and that doesn't work. Yeah, and, and we should, we should call out that.
And so we have, and so we will try our best to call out that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I believe there'll be plenty of time, I'm gonna have you guys review all the stuff that we
I said it to me already.
that we, you know, um, that we have here, you know? Unfortunately, in our Green Bush district, the N D T V, you know, you have the Drew property, which is already under construction.
Yep.
You have the gas station, which is already under construction.
Yep. Yep.
So, but you have to just
But I don't think it's unfortunate, I think it is what it is.
Oh, I think it is what it is too.
They just have to recognize that we have a different standard than some larger communities.
So that, there's gonna be a lot more on this in the next, um, you know, six months, um, year on this. And because I'll let you know after how it goes with the selection as well, um, because, you know, what you said.
Yeah, but I would definitely not look at changing our zoning right now.
No, I'm not looking to change it until we get feedback from them.
Yeah.
Yes, abso, I absolutely agree. I mean, if you remember last year when we were doing North Situette, we, this came out at the end of January, we still had our zoning open and we threw in the fifteen acres.
Right.
And that was the last thing. Without any guidance of, we didn't know that it was gonna be fifty contiguous acres and that kind of stuff.
Sure.
But, you know, so I do think Situette is
We're ahead of the game.
I think we're ahead of the game.
We are ahead of the game.
You just have to tell them that and then tell them not to be discriminated against these
Right.
Make them be fair.
Fair, serious.
Good luck.
Steve says, Steve says, he says.
There's all kinds of ways to play it.
Alright.
So that's where we are at MBTA, we're joined on a rapture.
Alright, we all said we can want to approve minutes. Is taking the
Excuse me? You have them.
You have them, okay, thank you.
You want me to send them out to you, dear?
No.
No, that's okay, you can do them this time, just this once, Anne.
Okay, okay, Rebecca.
Sigur, Sigur agreed when she's
I move to through the mid, meeting minutes, mid, February tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Mid, where, oh, second.
Second, who's second name?
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Rebecca, thank you. Okay, so that's done.
The economy is, I move to approve the registration of four hundred fifty dollars to Merrill Corporation for paying your services at two forty-seven Riverway, Drew slash MBTA, for forty-six dollars and sixty cents to Gate House Media for the annual subscription for the Citro Merrill, for thirty dollars and thirty-three cents to W B Mason for office supplies, for six hundred and sixty-five dollars to Bosworth Way for paying your services at Seaside and City.
Is there a second? Favor?
Aye.
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 I want to get together, Rebecca, okay?
Thank you, all in favor, all in favor. Alright, then we have Leah's line reports, I have nothing to report, does anybody have anything to report?
I have, there's a meeting with C P C Monday night, and that's about it. So, and maybe traffic rules Tuesday.
Also knows I'm never leaving the meeting again after the last one was, um, so it's um, conservation in Zonia is still driving their feet on um the pool, um, up in the West End, what, what's the name of that street, um?
Arrowood.
Yeah, Arrowood, yeah. They're still, uh, conservation's waiting for zoning, zoning's waiting for conservation, um, four young couples getting, I mean, they've been waiting over a year for um some kind of determination, but they keep pushing it off and uh
This wasn't cruise to space, nevermind.
No, no, they're coming next time, surprise, surprise.
No. And then uh, on, uh, in the, in the West End, um, drumbeat, we're gonna hear about heavy trucks on Clack Road.
Oh, a big one came down, um, in Phil Road today and he was huge. I thought for sure he was going to take over.
But did he come from three A or did he come from the west side?
I don't know.
I don't know how you would take a left turn off of Clack Road when you move there with an eighty little truck.
Well, he ran over the island.
Yeah, that's what this is happening, so that's, there is a, there's a concerted effort in the west, and they had a little ad hoc meeting last week. So we'll be, maybe starting to hear something about that. They're asking for people's um door dash cam stuff if you could, if you have something on the road here, please, I will get it.
This person was from out of state, you could tell from the license plate, and the problem is, he's on GPS
Yeah.
and they send him through the woods.
Yeah.
So
Well, they used to, back in the days, they, some contractors, like the group planners and stuff, but now everyone's, there's a lot of independent contractors, they tend to use GPS
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
who knows.
Imagine getting stuck in eighty square miles, there must be a car here.
Just through the telephone.
There's no street signs, so you don't
They're the brightest star of the
Yes.
Alright, our planning and development report.
Um, we remain very, very busy, um, eighteen Ford, I'm expecting the asphalt sometime early next week, he thinks he's gonna get into a unit, sell a unit by April first.
Have we done anything about addressing the landscape plan done yet?
Um, they haven't done the landscaping as far as I know, I, I know
I think he's just
I went out to the Dunkin' Donuts park the other day and if you remember, he's supposed to um fix that
Yeah.
so that, and so he's doing that work, he was doing that work this week.
Okay.
He's putting in more dense grade and he's actually gonna reset the ball and I mentioned at the time to him that I did not like the placement of his consent review unit um, for the mini splits. It's right out in the middle, he told me there was no place else to put it. So he also mentioned he did, he took out a walkway and, but he's working on the asphalt. Um, so that's coming along, the gas station's coming along, the Drew company's coming along. Um, so that's coming along, the gas station's coming along, the Drew company's coming along. Toll Brothers is Toll Brothers, um, and then next time, you have an accessory dwelling, you have a common driveway, you have two lots from uh, Currys Estates coming in from pools for a discussion. I'm not, I want them to have a discussion first, and then they can come back for a vote.
Two lots?
Two lots. Okay. You have a, you have a store lot permit discussion next time because I'm um, I'm not convinced it's functioning correctly and I'm not giving back the money yet, so um, I recommend if they come into the board.
Is that, is that for Cruz?
No. Um, then we have, we'll have an A and R and seven new driftways coming back with a concept, that they're working on some, a new concept. And I, they had given, you guys got the site plan, and I told them it's kind of meaningless without an elevation.
Right.
And so the elevation wasn't done today, which is why they continue. So I do think that's a good call on their part, you know, I have reiterated that we want the building to look more like if it's in Situate. And I think that's beginning to happen.
Took a while.
And so
The um, if they're coming in next time, I'm not gonna be here, and I think others
No, that's March twenty fourth.
No.
You're here March twenty fourth, aren't you?
No.
You're not?
That's what I just said.
Oh, I thought you said April twenty eighth.
No, March twenty fourth.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Alright, that's what you were talking about.
No, no, no.
So you know twenty eighth, I'm not gonna be here.
Okay. Um, well, yeah, that's what's coming for next month.
Yeah, can I ask you to just bring up the, um, we still don't have the traffic study for the CD center?
They're working on the numbers is what I'm told, I, she asked when I wanted to schedule her, I said, I'm not scheduling till you get the data.
And this the report first.
And it was supposed to be February first, right?
Right, exactly. No, no, they had
They had six months, they had to do it for six months.
Right, and that was the end of January, they're putting, they're putting the data together now. And so I'm not scheduling a time until I have a report that I can get out to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't want them to come in and walk us through it.
Right, right, you wanna read it first, like, you know, that's a common courtesy. So I'll schedule it after I get the stuff. It is, they have been reminded of it. They have been reminded of it, and I am told it is being done, so. That's all I have. Anybody have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay?
Nope.
No, alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is that Rebecca? I hope your father's doing aye.
Yeah, I said aye.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all in favor.
She is, so far so good.